Carl?
He's gonna be late.
I call the September twenty-first school committee meeting to order. Tonight, we have the, our main item on the agenda is the Walker, review of the Walker report and following that, we have some donations and such to go over in our reports at the end. I did wanna just briefly say that I know that there's been some questions about when are we gonna do the superintendent's evaluation, that there's no, there's no, no real reason why, well, there is a reason why we haven't done it yet and that's just a scheduling issue. There's no issues with it or concerns with it or anyone, any cause for concern for anybody. And so that we are working to get, get it on the schedule for next week. And it's not formal yet, but I believe we're gonna be on Tuesday night instead of Wednesday night to go over that.
Monday night, instead of Monday night.
I mean, instead of Monday night, yeah. So, just, just to allay anybody's fears, there's no issues or problems with it, it's just gonna be scheduled tomorrow. So with that, I would like to present the Walker report.
Great. I'm gonna come stand over here, try to keep you guys engaged, a lot of information. So as you're all aware, we had Walker partnerships come out and do a program evaluation of our special education programs during last school year. They came out between February and May of last year. And I'm gonna go through the beginning slides kinda quickly because everyone's seen the report and I don't think I need to spend a lot of time on some of the early on pieces. I'm gonna talk about the introduction and the purpose, the methodology, the commendations, findings and recommendations and next steps. And I've kinda chunked those pieces together to give you a sense of what were the findings and recommendations and then what are the next steps that we wanna move forward. So, Dr. Dory and I had met with Walker, I think it was in January or February of last year, and we really felt that this was a great opportunity for us to do a program evaluation with me being new to the position and wanting some additional information on what direction and what were some of the priorities. We also had some questions about paraprofessional staffing and wanted to see how we compared in terms of our paraprofessionals. So, Walker, we engaged Walker in the conversation and they began kinda taking a look at our programs. So, we wanted to get, this gives you some of the pieces that we wanted to look at. We wanted to look at expenditures, we wanted to look at our practices, we wanted to look at staffing, our programs, we kinda really wanted a comprehensive look. So, in order to do that, we provided Walker with a lot of data and a lot of paperwork. They reviewed student records and they had the opportunity to interview staff and they also had the opportunity to interview parents. The parents that participated were those parents who had come to CPAC meetings previously and shared their email addresses, so those were the parents who were contacted and given the opportunity to come in. I think we had eight parents participate in that, which is, on average, probably what we get at a CPAC meeting is about eight families. So, they looked at documentation, they also did walkthroughs, so each of the principals had the opportunity to meet, there were two gentlemen from Walker who came out. They had a chance to go to every building and walk through the schools with the principals and see the different spaces, to see classrooms. They also spent time observing our programs, so they sat in our programs and observed what was happening. And then you'll see the list of people that they had the chance to interview. And the reason why it kinda took so long was one, we had a lot of snow.
Yeah.
So, there was a lot of scheduling pieces. And then, as we went through the process, we realized that we wanted to make sure we included all stakeholders. And when we had finished the first round of interviews, we realized that we didn't have any classroom teachers and we hadn't reached out to our parent community. So we made the decision to delay the findings on the report until we had a chance to have some classroom teachers and some parents participate in interviews, just so we had all stakeholders as part of this process. So, I think you all had a chance to see the questions that were asked of our staff and then there were questions asked of parents. So they asked the same questions with all staff and they asked the same questions the parents met as a, as a group, they actually met down here. So, these were the questions that were asked of them. So some of the commendations, I mean, I think you all had a chance again to review these, it was, you know, commending Dr. Dory and myself for commissioning this, that our staff were very open and honest in the interview process, which I, I do think the staff were really invested in getting some good feedback from the process and shared a lot of information in their observations, they saw very dedicated staff, which we know that we have here, especially in our special education programs, that our staff were committed to student success. They noted that at Coolidge in particular, there were monthly meetings being held for paraprofessionals to really keep them connected to what was going on. They noted the work that we were doing in our vertical meetings that, last year with our special education staff, so it was an opportunity for both learning center and program teachers to meet vertically, and that was something that staff reported that they really liked doing. The PLC work, last year, we had Alan Bloom from, who retired from Simmons College, come out and do some work with our special education staff on IEP writing, and that's something they noted that was a very positive experience for staff. Our building principals are very supportive of our programs and are very invested in the success of those programs. We have a lot of technology for students. We have a wide range of programs, we've talked about those before, to meet different types of learning needs. The, the work that we do with occupational therapy, and I'll talk about that a little bit later, but that they have a very integrated and proactive approach from preschool and through kindergarten. And then the co-taught work that we do is something else that they thought was a commendation. They noted in our records, we have well-written IEPs. We make sure students have access to the general education curriculum. We have lots of instructional supplies and materials. We contract for consultative services, so through CEM and other contracted service providers, when students have unique needs, like they may need a teacher, they're visually impaired, we contract for those services to make sure students have them. We try to make sure we have a continuum of programs. And then they noted the higher percentage that we have of students who are included in the general education setting than the statewide average. More commendation, the work that we've done with CEM around our transportation contract, the ongoing efforts that we make to have students return to the district from out-of-district placements because of the strength of our in-district programs. As we talked about last year, we did a great job on our coordinated program review by the Department of Education. The TSP program, there's a typo there, but the TSP program at the high school, last year we used some grant funds to help that program develop a system for data collection on students. And so that was something that they noted was actually happening, which is always great when you use grant funds to train people and then you see someone from the outside comment the work that's happening. And then the work that is happening at the Rise Preschool, that we have a continuum of options for students, we have substantially separate to fully integrated options for our early childhood needs. So, I'm gonna again kinda go through the data pretty quickly because I think you've had a chance to look at this, but this is a comparison of our special education census to like districts. So our percentage of students on IEPs, this is just IEP related. And then again, this is looking at the percentage of students by disability category, so you'll see the highlighted pieces for reading is that our communication number is lower than the state average and our specific learning disabilities number is higher. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in the findings piece. Again, these are comparison by like districts. These are our inclusion numbers, so sixty-eight point two percent of our students are in full inclusion, twenty point seven partial, and eighty-six point two is, is the total number of inclusion. So, and then you see the state average, so you see we're well above the state average for including students. And then this is about substantially separate, so this is the percentage of our students who are substantially separate.
Carol, just a quick question. So, how do we come up with the, I, I know how we do it in other, other measurements in terms of like districts, but it's funny, I've never seen Easton as, as someone.
I don't know.
Yeah, Walker came up with these comparable districts.
They did.
Yeah, it was.
We did not provide them.
We did not give those.
No, they came up with the comparable, so.
Did they give you, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
Did they give you an indication as to how they chose them or they just gave it to you?
No, they did not.
They did not provide that.
That would be something I think I'd wanna know.
How did they pick the comparable? And then this is funding for special education, so our total reading school budget and then the special education budget, so you can see the change over time in terms of the total school budget and the special ed budget. And then this one, the funding for special education. Again, you see the funding comparisons to the like districts. Again, I think we're kinda right in the mix with these comparable districts, but I don't know exactly the reason they picked those. And then this gives you the percentage of the total budget and the percentage of students on IEPs. So just kind of a quick snapshot, and then you see the state average. So again, I don't think we're too off of anything that's happening statewide. And then this shows you our out-of-district placement, so where do we have students? So four point seven percent are in public day, two point, two point four at private day and three point three percent in residential placements. And then this was the look at the paraprofessional piece, which we still need to do some of our own analysis on because when we look at those numbers, we don't think they're the actual numbers, we think it has to do with our year-end reporting, I think, but we need to dig a little deeper, Martha, and I felt like there might be something off in that because we seem to have more than that number of paraprofessionals for special education, so, but this is saying sixty-seven point one. But it could be an FTE piece, 'cause sometimes we look at the total number of people versus FTEs, so we'd have to dig a little deeper into this number. So, some of the key findings, I think this is really important to just take a look at this number, because what you see here is the number of students on IEPs, when you start at the elementary, you move to middle, and then when we get to high school. And then when we add in a 504 plan, a 504 plan is also for students who are identified with disabilities, so when we add in 504 plans, you'll see that we're at the high school, we're at twenty-eight percent of our population, our students identified with disabilities. And we seem to be increasing the number of students requiring some sort of specialized instruction as they move through the grades. So this is just an important factor to be looking at here.
Is there some reasoning behind why that occurs, why we get, you know, almost doubled at middle school and high school compared to elementary?
Well, I think as we go through the process, you'll see there's a lot of recommendations around training on the eligibility process and ensuring that staff are going through and identifying, accurately identifying who has a disability. I also think we look at what types of supports for general education are available, so as we move to high school, there aren't as many general education supports in elementary. We have reading specialists, we have Title I, we have other things that we offer to support students who are struggling and as they move higher and higher, those general ed supports become less and less. So it's sort of balancing and looking at how are students able to get the supports they need and do they require special education?
I have a sort of connected question. Do you have any data on how these numbers relate to peer communities or state averages? So it looked like the number of students in special education was pretty comparable, but it was much lower than twenty-four, twenty-eight percent when you include in the 504s. So I'm just wondering, do we have any data on that?
I don't have anything specifically, but that's a similar question that the administrative council asked, so it's something that I think we wanted to get more information to see if similar communities were seeing this rise. You know, we would, we would wanna see a decrease, you know, that students are responding to the interventions, but it is something that we have to look, you know, more deeply into and really look at those numbers a little more. So, findings and recommendations. So the first area that Walker gave us some feedback on was our MTSS process. As you guys are all aware, we are using our School Culture and Transformation Grant to work on implementing MTSS. And what they found is that we, as a district, have varying levels of implementation, which is not a surprise to us, but it does impact how things are being perceived. And at one point, the recommendations say, you know, we need to kinda make a decision. Well, we have made a decision that we are going with the MTSS process, so you'll see in the kinda next steps what we're doing around that. They also indicated we need to develop and distribute our D cap and we need to start having more conversations between general ed and special education staff around interventions and supports for all learners. So for this year, we're continuing under our School Transformation Grant to do MTSS implementation. Parker High School in Barrows, we are hoping they're gonna participate in the PBIS Academy, there was just a late email out today, that the high school may be able to slide into a spot, which is very exciting. Parker and Barrows, we're not sure, I think Barrows is in.
Barrows is also in.
So Parker, we're not sure where they stand, but this is an exciting next step to get those buildings into a coaching model and getting them the professional development around MTSS and PBIS. We made a commitment that we're gonna do an overview refresher for all staff at the building level on the MTSS process, so Sarah Berg will be going out and working with principals and the district MTSS team to do that, so we can continue to reinforce the message that this is a priority for us as a district and that this is, this is something we're all doing. We have rolled out the D cap, so on the first two days of school, I had a traveling road show, I went to every building and I had the opportunity to give kind of a jumpstart overview on different topics, and the D cap was one of those. The principals have made the D cap available at the building level, so I've been in different buildings and seen the D cap on the conference room table where they have data team meetings, and principals are really working to integrate the D cap into their conversations through their data teams and through their SST, their student support team, so that it is something that they're using in real time versus just asking people to read it, they're using it for real-life work that staff are doing with students. We, the district MTSS team is gonna be taking an inventory this year of all the interventions that we have available in the district, so that we have a baseline of the supports that we provide for all learners, which will be exciting to be able to share out among the buildings. We're going to continue to review the data on the students who are referred from the building teams for special education evaluations to make sure that those students that we are identifying as staff are more accurate, that they're actually children and who have disabilities through our child find process. We're gonna continue to work with data teams on reviewing academic and behavioral data as part of that MTSS process. We are identifying time during admin council or district leadership team meetings to discuss MTSS and progress on MTSS and reviewing data, so that it's something that's part of the conversations we're having as an administrative team. And we are developing, oh, we developed the MTSS action plan as an administrative council that has certain steps in place that we're gonna be monitoring this year, and that also connects to our goals as administrator and hopefully to teacher goals as well. In the next two to five years, we need to continue to work on our MTSS implementation with the goal of getting eighty percent or higher on the TFI at all buildings at all tiers. So I know Sarah has shared with you the tiered fidelity instrument that looks at fidelity to our interventions at tier one, tier two and tier three. Our goal is to get to eighty percent at each tier. We need to work, the struggle that we have is really looking at, the SST team is to identify tier three supports. From a philosophical framework perspective, our goal is to be at eighty percent in implementation of tier one, eighty percent implementation of tier two, then we would develop an SST team, but because we have the need to have this SST process, we're trying to balance how do we have a student support team when we're not quite at eighty percent fidelity for tier two? And we need to increase the number of tier two and tier three interventions that are available at all levels. So once we've developed an inventory of what we have, we can see where we're missing interventions and then we need to build those supports in place at all levels, so not just at elementary, but throughout the district. And that's where you might have potential budget implications because we may need staffing or resources to implement, whether it's academic or social-emotional interventions. So, the next big area that Walker identified is kind of a broad category of administrative needs. So, over the last five years, there's been over twenty team chairs who have worked in the district, so we've had a lot of turnover in that position. We have also had a review in two thousand and seven, some similar people, I don't think it was Walker, but similar.
Group, yeah.
Came out and did an evaluation and there were similar findings that hadn't been kind of rectified, so concerns that we're not implementing recommendations from previous reports. We don't have a system in place, there wasn't documentation that our special ed programs are evaluated on an annual basis, which is something that the Department of Education requires. The role of the team chair has been unclear. There's been four changes in my position since two thousand and seven. They brought up concerns about the structure of the Student Services Office and whether or not it provides appropriate supervision as needed for the programs within the district. And then our policies and procedures can be unclear, so depending on who the team chair was in a building, that might drive what certain buildings we're doing versus being a district-wide policy or procedure. So, this year, we increased the number of team chairs. So, a lot of, you know, I'm relatively new, I can still say that, and so the turnover that I had in team chairs was I couldn't really do an analysis based on the staff that I had, but getting a sense from my team chairs that stayed with me, the concerns that they shared were, there were salary concerns, there are concerns about caseload, which is why we increased the number of team chairs to make their caseloads more manageable. Our team chairs as administrators, they are charged with completing all of their own paperwork related to the IEP process, which is quite extensive in terms of copying, mailing, they don't have any clerical support. So, you know, there's a lot of reasons for people leaving because they're not feeling supported, and I think also the other reason is the job really wasn't clear. So we've been doing a lot of work this year to clarify that role. I will be finalizing the job description by October to just make sure that's clear. We've been working with principals to make sure that they understand the role of the team chair, especially with such a new group that we have. And I'm continuing to look at the structure of the Student Services Office to make sure that we can have the right support. I don't have the ideal vision yet, but it is a work in progress. We, I've been working this year with our new team chairs at the high school, I have Stephanie and Adam are my team chairs at the high school, and we've been working on the eligibility process and really refining how we go through that process with the high school staff. As I said, I reviewed eligibility with all staff this school year and I had a chance to review the evaluation from the two thousand and seven and compare the findings. And I will say, you know, administrative structure was very similar, administrative structure, those concerns were similar. The structure wasn't the same, but there were still concerns about how the office was structured and the type of supervision that was provided to the programs. In the next two to five years, we do really need to think about our clerical support to better manage the Student Services Office. It's not just answering phones, the amount of paperwork that comes in and out of the office and the, the requests for paperwork and our quick turnaround, it can be really challenging because we are very clerically thin, and so when we have requests from either other districts or parents or attorneys to gather paperwork, it does take a lot of times and I've found myself running around to different places trying to find the paperwork that we need, 'cause we just don't always have it because, you know, we don't have one person who's that, their job to manage that component. We need to finalize our policy and procedure manual for special education. Last year, I drafted a document and we kind of used it a little bit last year. I had the chance to go out to some of the buildings to gather feedback, I still need to get some more feedback so I can finalize that document. And as I said, in the next two to five years, we really need to determine what does the structure need to be in the Student Services Office, because the Student Services Office is not just special education, it's ELL, it's overseeing our homeless population, it is overseeing 504, nursing, I think those are my big ones. So, you know, it's not just a special education office, so making sure the structure is in place to support all of those components.
Can I just add one piece to the last slide? So, we didn't add from a monetary standpoint two point four positions. What we did is we restructured two point, we restructured two existing positions into team chair positions and used an additional piece of the IDA grant, point four, to fund the last piece. So we restructured the high school department chair position, which Stephanie was in that role last year, so that position is, is now been restructured to a team chair position. And originally in the budget last year, you remember, we asked you for a TSP, SSP coordinator. We never went forward with that position, we felt because of the needs of this report that we needed the additional team chair, so we restructured it for that team chair position. We felt that the, the role of the TSP, SSP coordinator would not have flourished in, without the additional support from the, the team chair. So, that was the rationale, so what we did not add money to the, the budget, just so you're aware.
All right, so we're gonna talk a little bit about program development, 'cause that was another, the next big area. So, Walker really felt that we need to start looking and expanding and improving the programs that we do offer. We have to make sure that our programs are consistent level to level, so that's a real important piece, that we have this both horizontally aligned when we talk about our learning centers and vertically aligned when we talk about our programs. We need to look at all of our spaces, some of that's beyond my purview, but I think to bring to your attention as the committee, to really understand that we have some inadequate spaces for our special education programs and we need to evaluate how we wanna house those programs. We need to look at our program, the SSP and TSB are program for students with social-emotional needs, we need to look at that program and the program structure and really look at adding counseling staff in some capacity to all of those programs and ensure that it's aligned vertically. And for all programs, we need to have entrance and exit criteria that's not only known by us or me, but by our school community and, and that parents are aware of that as well. So, this year, to kind of address some of these needs, we've made the decision that through our PLC structure, that program teachers, so every special ed teacher who teaches in a program, when we have district PLC time, they will be meeting as a group, which means they will be meeting vertically, I think it is thirteen, twelve?
Twelve.
Twelve times this school year. And the charge of that work is for them to do the entrance and exit criteria to finalize their program description. So that's an opportunity to make sure that they are aligned in their practices and how, what type of students we service. Our learning center teachers, they will have designated time on other dates for them to work together. Our elementary group likes to work together horizontally to ensure that we have consistency among our elementary schools, and the middle and high school work together vertically to be more aligned in their practices. We need to continue to review all of our program spaces and do walkthroughs and, and see where people are located and what our needs might be. We need to take a look at, at the middle and high school level, the ILP and DLC models. We did make a decision this past year to add a DLC teacher. We did make a decision this past year to add a DLC teacher to Coolidge. So, one of the concerns from the report was that the DLC program, the teacher in that program worked sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so, it was really difficult to do planning and support all those students' needs. So, we were able to take another position and add it to Coolidge as a DLC special education teacher. We are also going to be looking to rename our programs, which I'm very excited about. One of the things that came out in the Walker report is that we, as a school community, refer to students by the program name. And we really need to move away from that. So, that will be part of the work that our PLCs will be doing is coming up with names for the programs that are not labeling of students and the disability type. So, I'm very excited that that work will be happening this year. I know it'll be a little confusing for people as we walk through, but we can create a crosswalk so people know what programs we're talking about. We are going to be providing this year to support some of the programmatic needs. We've reached out to North Shore Consortium and created a consulting contract with them. They are going to come into our social emotional programs and provide consultation monthly to those programs to make sure that they are implementing the clinical groups that they were trained in last year. So, all of the teachers in the SSP and TSP programs last year were provided training in DBT and CBT so that they can implement those groups. And the goal this year with North Shore Consortium is to continue to provide the professional staff with consultation so that they can implement those clinical programs. We're also using North Shore Consortium to provide clinical supervision for all of our counseling staff. So, one of the pieces in the report that came out is that we're not providing school psychologists and our school adjustment counselors with the opportunity to have regular supervision to discuss challenging cases in a confidential manner. So, we will have licensed clinical social workers from North Shore Consortium coming in to provide that clinical supervision on a monthly basis for all of our counseling staff. We have relocated the TSP classroom at the high school. So, it was previously located downstairs near the cafeteria. It's now been located so that it's next to the SSP classroom and the guidance suite. So, we think that that's a better spot for now those students. We've also relocated where the in-school suspension and the students who are being reintegrated from hospitalization. They don't share space anymore. So, those have been separated. We have a special ed teacher who returned to teach in the TSP program from last year and we were able to hire a new social worker for the TSP program. So, those programs at the high school level are fully staffed. The post-program, just to give you a little update, we're very excited. They now have a van. They are starting a copy center and we're going to be giving them their own email address so we can email them work to do, large copying projects. They have been helping with the mail in the high school office. They've reached out to Debbie at Rise to potentially do some internships down in the preschool. They are doing some work in my office. They've been out in the community last week. They went to Smolak Farm. They're working closely with the recreational therapists from SEEM to identify students' interests. So, we think so far, so good. Everyone seems pretty happy in their space. In the next two to five years, we do need to look at space, which has a budget implication. We need to look at restructuring our TSP and SSP program to make sure we have the right type of staffing and the curriculum and materials that they need in that classroom. We need to look at our high school support model. So, as you read in the report, a lot of our supports at the high school are done through a pull-out model or the learning center. And we need to look at some different options through that. And then we need to develop guidelines for how we go about getting more support. So, when staff feel that they need a paraprofessional, they need additional support, we need to have some guidelines to help IEP teams in making those decisions so that we have more consistency in making those, how those decisions. So, co-teaching is the next big area. So, Walker spent a lot of time talking in the reports about sort of how we have some inconsistent models. We do some co-teaching here. Birch Meadow does a lot of co-teaching. Barrows continues to have fifth grade co-teaching. And here at the high school, we have co-teaching models. But we don't have a clear, consistent approach to co-teaching. We don't have a definition. We don't have guidelines. Their recommendation is that, you know, we need to have a manual. We need to have kind of a clear definition as all of us as administrators about what co-teaching is. Because I think if we went into a classroom, we would all view what's happening in that classroom very differently. So, what was observed is that a lot of times in those co-teaching environments, there were two different lessons happening. The special educator might be working with the students identified on IEPs and the general education classroom teacher is working with those students who are not. And so, that, Walker felt, we needed to do a lot more work on what does a co-teaching classroom look like. So, we discussed at administrative council that it wasn't realistic this year to really change sort of that practice with the little time we have together as an administrative council. So, the priority this year is really for us as an administrative council, including team chairs, principals, assistant principals, to come up with a shared definition of co-teaching and then, and then also a definition of in-class support. So, for some classrooms, we may have co-teaching. And what does that look like? And what are we defining that as? And in other classrooms, we may have people coming in to provide in-class support. And what does that mean? And what are we defining that as? So, our goal this year is really to define those terms as an administrative council. Because having clarity on that will allow us then to move forward to the next steps. And then, once we've defined that, to create an action plan. Where do we want to build these co-teaching relationships? What's the professional development? How do we go, what are the action steps we need to take? The elementary learning center teachers in their horizontal meetings, they will be spending time talking about co-teaching because that's something they're very interested in discussing further. So, they will be working on that. And that, as an administrative council, we'll be going out and doing some walkthroughs. So, what are the environments we really want to look at is some of the co-teaching environments? And what does that really mean for all of us? So, as I said, the next two to five years is really the development of an action plan and then what are going to be our staffing needs? Do we need more special education teachers? Do we not? And really identifying what that looks like and how we're going to implement it. We had a lot of recommendations and findings around professional development. So, people always want more professional development. We never seem to have enough time to do that. But the feedback was that we really need to have a comprehensive approach to how we're training staff on special education. Staff are looking for more frequent, in-depth training opportunities. As we talked about the eligibility process, people want to provide more training and support for our paraprofessionals, training for team chairs, more support for general education staff in understanding the role of special educators, and sharing out program information. I think that was a common theme you'll see throughout the report is what are the programs that we have? How are we evaluating them? And how are we sharing out information? So, this year, as I said, we reviewed the eligibility process. During the induction week, I had an opportunity to meet with the new staff and talk about special education. Alan Bloom came in and met with all this new staff to talk about general education and special education. I worked with the team chairs to finalize a document that's called Goals and Responsibilities that talks about who is responsible for what part of the IEP process to provide some clarity and to create some consistency again. So, it's not person-dependent. It's actually what we do across the district. And this year, we're going to continue to work with Alan Bloom on the special education, where special education and general education intersect. Because staff have really wanted him to come back. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback. He also presented at Blue Ribbon last year. And we have lots of principals and teaching staff who want him to come back. Some of the professional development priorities that we've identified for this year. We are going to be sending over fifty staff to Social Thinking Conference. That's in Boston. So, that's really teaching staff about social skills development. It's giving staff strategies on self-regulation. There are also going to be sessions for teaching executive functioning skills for older students. So, we're very excited that it's going to be grant-funded and the substitutes will also be covered through the grant. I mentioned the clinical supervision and consultation. This is a relationship that's ongoing. So, staff really want that ongoing, in-depth coaching model. So, that's what North Shore will be providing. We're going to continue, as we did last year, through our grant. We had a BCBA come from SEEM to consult to our social and emotional programs. So, this is grant-funded, so it allows us to really target the needs of those programs. So, it's very direct. And again, it's a coaching model where the BCBA comes in and is monitoring what people are doing, is coaching paraprofessionals, and modeling how to work with students. We're using our in-district BCBA this year that we hired, which has been a really great hire. She's supporting our ILP, our DLC, and our Compass programs. So, she's not only meeting IEP meetings, but she's doing coaching with staff. And she's going to be providing some training for our paraprofessionals and our professional staff on some of the professional development days. We are going to be sending some of our ILP and DLC staff to a training called Introduction to Verbal and Behavioral Training, which is for students who are non-verbal. And this again would be grant-funded, so that's a great opportunity. We're having a woman from UMass Boston who'll be coming out to the district on October thirteenth on our Professional Development Day, who's going to be doing some work with our middle school and high school staff on person-centered planning and transition planning. So, as students meet that are fourteen years and older and they become part of the process, she's going to be doing some training. It's a full-day training and I'm very excited to have her come out. We're sending staff to the Mass Down Syndrome Congress Educator Forum. We have, we've established a consulting contract with the Landmark School this year. They're going to be working with our language-based programs at Eden, Parker, and the high school. They will also be coming out on the professional day to do training with special educators, paraprofessionals, and some of our classroom teachers. And they'll be doing a coaching and consultation model throughout the school year and working with those, each building, to help them improve their language-based programs. And as I mentioned before, we're going to continue to work with Alan Bloom. The next step for professional development is really thinking about like what's going to be our comprehensive plan to make sure we're addressing all areas that are priorities. We want to make sure that we, as we put together our plan, have opportunities to work with all staff to go over key issues in special education. The challenge, I think, is just time and finding that time to meet with when there's competing interests. And then we need to continue to get the feedback from staff to make sure we're matching what we're offering with what they feel is a priority. Another area that we struggled with is transition, which is preschool to elementary, elementary to middle, and middle to high school. We don't seem to have a consistent process for transitioning students. And again, I think it's been person-dependent in the role versus a district-wide process for transitioning students. So, as an administrative council, we agree that this is a priority area that we're going to be working on so that we have a written plan in place and that we can communicate out to staff and families that this is our transition process. We need to start it early. We need to communicate it out. And we need to make sure that we're being consistent level to level and building to building. And then, once we start the process, we need to monitor it to make sure that we're continuing to implement it. It makes a big difference. All of us as parents, our anxiety level increases when we're looking at that next level. And when we're thinking of students with disabilities, their parents have even more anxiety about that transition. So, we really need to think about how we're transitioning students and being thoughtful both for parents, students, and for the receiving staff. Parental awareness and support. So, this is an area, I think, that has been a struggle in terms of the official CPAC. We really, last year, I made numerous attempts to get parents involved. I offered many meetings. And unfortunately, I think, our most well-attended meeting was the first one. It was like a meet and greet. We had about twenty parents. And then, from that point on, it was five, six, eight parents at the max. So, and no real leadership team came forward. So, that's really been a challenge in terms of how to get that structure going and how to find some parents who want to take on that leadership role. So, this year, I'm going to be offering four training topics. The Department of Education has issued some new guidance for us on how, what we can do. And so, one option is to provide training topics for parents throughout the school year. And then, maybe through that process, we'll have some parents who come forward who'd really like to take a leadership role and be part of the CPAC. It would be great to have a group of parents who could act as advisory. But unfortunately, we just don't have an organized group. People come in and out of my office, but no one seems to want to be on that leadership core. We need to, so this ties in is we need to improve parent education on disabilities and understanding their own child's disability. So, that can happen through the IEP process, but it may be one of the topics that we have to offer to parents through our parent training. We need to make sure parents feel that they're an integral member of the IEP process. We need to develop a parental engagement process that is consistent across the district so parents feel engaged in special education. And again, program descriptions, that's kind of a repeated theme, that making sure parents can find it and are aware of that. This year, as I said, we'll do four meetings of the CPAC. I'll be sending out a communication to parents via mail by October fifteenth. So, I, last year, started a process of sending a kind of a welcome letter along with the notice of procedural safeguards. So, that will actually, the post-program is going to be doing the mailing, which I'm very excited about. So, they'll be collating and putting everything in the envelopes and sending that all out. So, by October fifteenth, that will all be sent in the mail. And in there will be all the dates for the CPAC meetings. And I usually give a little update, you know, let them know who the new team chairs are. So, our members of the parents, special education pack are going to be included in the communication audit to see if they have any feedback to us on that. I'm going to try to add more information to the Student Services website, get that to be a place where parents can find more information and make it a little more user-friendly because there's a lot of information on there, but it's not all easily accessible. We have a team meeting survey form that we provide to every parent at the end of an IEP meeting and it's sent back to my office. We're going to continue that process. Actually, the post-program, they folded them for us and they've been distributed to the team chair. So, at the end of every meeting, they're given to parents and parents are encouraged to send them back. They can fill them out anonymously or not, but we don't get a lot of them. But it would be great to get more of them. I'm also going to be sending a survey out to all the parents who participated in our extended school year program because I'd like to get some feedback from parents. I've heard from the staff about what they would like to improve. But I'd like to hear from parents about what they feel could be improved. And that's really it. There's a lot of information there. I didn't go into everything, but tried to hit on the highlights. Did you guys have questions about the report?
I just want to say that I think it's really well-done. And I commend you for your candor. It's not something that always happens. It's not just, you know, in school, not pointing towards right, but it's hard to look at your program and say, here's where we are and here's where we need to go. And I think you've done a terrific job. I commend you and Dr. Doherty for doing it. Because there has been, over the years, lots of talk about, you know, the special education program. And of course, with, you know, four different leaders over seven years, it hasn't been able to move forward. And I just want to say, from my perspective, I think you're doing a great job. And we hope, I know I've talked to other school community members too. I can't speak for all of them, but we're, you know, we're very happy with your performance and, you know, hope you're going to stick around and see this to the finish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Along those lines, what kind of update will we, I mean, I'd like to, you know, maybe have three, four, six months from now to find out where we are with all these.
Good question. There is, there is already something in the calendar as part of our topic base. I can't remember which date we put down, but.
What's another update?
April twenty-sixth. April 26th.
I, I want to actually echo Mr. Niant's comments. I think that was a phenomenal presentation and I want to express my support for your work. The, the plan of having four scheduled CPAC meetings for the year, I think, is really smart because parents can kind of know, all right, these are when they're going to be. I guess I'd like to express desire, not just to you, but to parents who might be watching this. It would be really great if some committed parents would come together and serve as an advisory council because I think it really adds their voices in a powerful way. So I'll just edit that, but thank you.
And I just want to thank my team chairs. They came tonight to be here. They took time out of their evenings to come and support and it's exciting to have some new, strong administrators be part of our team, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Now we have, have the modular classroom package.
I'm going to have Martha give us the answer.
So included in your packet for tonight's meeting was an update on the modular classroom project. As you all know, we moved into both the Killam and the Barrows Elementary modulars. The Barrows move happened over the weekend and the students started here this morning with a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Barrows as well. My outline talked a little bit about the punch list and we're learning a little bit as we get each modular comes on board. You know, when we moved into the Killam one, we realized that there's a need for shelving. So the shelving has been added in the Killam modular by our maintenance staff. It was put into Barrows over the weekend as part of that move and will be put into Eaton too. So we're learning as we, as we are mobilizing into the modulars. The punch list was very similar for both Killam and Barrows in terms of things that needed to be done. Most of them have been addressed already, like the light bulb switching out and the adding the signage and things along that manner. What will be done over the next 30 days at all three of them is the installation of the gutters and the downspouts and the different overhangs. Those take carpenter skills and they take multiple days to build and to put onto the units. So those will be done over the next 30 days, but they, they have not been completed at this point. I believe Killam will be done this weekend. It should be done by Wednesday of next week. So, and they're trying to be mindful of the fact that the buildings are now occupied so they can't be up there banging during the day. So they're going to be doing this work on, you know, Wednesday afternoons or Saturday, you know, late Friday into Saturday. So they're being mindful of the school day as well. The temporary fencing has been removed, the general cleanup has occurred. So we really do appreciate the temporary occupancy permit and expect to get a 30-day, a permanent permit in 30 days once all the punch list is taken care of. I want to talk a little bit about the budget. We were approved for a budget of 1.2 million. And as you know, at the finance committee meeting on the 16th of September, we did request and we're given an additional $75,000 to shore up the budget to complete this project. The majority of the capital appropriation that we were given went to the Vanguard contract. The contract came in a million 17, or excuse me, a million 17,000, which, which did use up the bulk of the 1.2 million. We have had a number of change orders that have come through and I tried to group them in the narrative here, but the majority of the change orders, a big portion of them, almost $19,000, were for site conditions. So we encountered boulders at every single site. And Vanguard, in their proposal, had planned on coming in and using an auger method to just kind of, to use a better expression, like a knife through butter, you know, just to kind of cut through and get the trenching done. And they encountered boulders, which means they had to bring in excavation crews and then remove the boulders from the site. So a big portion of the change orders were for unforeseen site conditions. The next biggest category of change orders were really for what I would call town regulations. And it had a lot to do with engineering requirements when it came to water and sewer. So Vanguard's proposal included four-inch pipe, town requirements is six-inch. So there's an example of a change order that came through. Same thing when it came to, at Barrows, the site particularly, there was a, and this is where, forgive me, I'm not an engineer, but it had to do with a drop sewer hookup versus an outside of the sewer hookup. So, you know, there was another change order that came. So, so some of them have been because of town requirements. And the other large one had to do with the ramps. So initially, the proposal included just a straight ramp, which is what you'll see at the Eaton modular when that one opens hopefully next Monday. But at the Barrows and Killam, it's what's called a switchback ramp. So because of the proximity of the building, modular building, to the school building, we had to maintain that 20-foot egress per safety equipment, for fire and safety equipment. And so they had to do a switchback ramp so that they weren't impairing that, that egress. The last few little ones had to do with, you know, a pounded post fence, lattice work for the decks, as you've seen at the Eaton and Killam modulars. We put lattice work up to beautification of the modular and some stone installation around the grounds of the modular. So the rest of them are very small dollar and didn't really fit into a category. As far as the, the projected costs, I did include a table there to try and highlight some of the bigger costs. Obviously, the cost of the units themselves, the site preparation and utility tie-in. We did make a decision early on in the project, given that it was three sites, that an OPM would be beneficial and we have really benefited from having Gail onsite, from their engineering expertise and just keeping the journals of, you know, who's there and what's happening on a daily basis has been very, very helpful to both Joe Huggins, myself and Dr. Doherty. And so at this point, we have about $24,000, $25,000 left in the contingency to bring us up to the 1.275. And at this point in the project, we feel very comfortable that the 1.275 should, should get the project to completion.
Yes, just a quick question about the punch list. And you said it would require a carpenter to do the gutters and downspouts. Is that in this or is that coming from the contingency?
Oh, no, it's already in there. It's part of the contracted price with Vanguard. It's something they have to deliver, they just haven't finished it.
Oh, okay. The way you said, we'll try to require a contractor or a carpenter, I thought maybe we were going outside.
Oh, no, 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 Vanguard, it's Vanguard that's doing it. The same people that built the decks are going to be building this.
Right, okay.
Well, it's curious that when they, the switchback ramp, I mean, why wouldn't they have known that when they were putting the, they knew where the sites were going to be, that they discovered they needed to do that? I mean, that seems to me that shouldn't be a change order.
Well, I, I think what happens is, you know, you, you submit a bid, but then when you get to the actual site and start measuring it and looking at exactly what needs to be done, and then you have conversations with fire department, which, which has its, you know, own requirements, then that's what the, you know, that's what led to the switchback ramp.
Yeah. So I'm not sure if we'll be building any more of these, but it wouldn't totally surprise me. But have we learned through this process of, you know, steps that we might take to avoid potential change orders, such as like the six-inch pipe as opposed to the four-inch pipe? Can we, you know, make the bids more specific, I guess, so that in the event that we, you know, potentially could have another modular placed somewhere? Does that make sense, Juan?
Yeah, no, absolutely it does. Thank you for the question. Definitely, there have been some lessons learned with, with how we structured our proposal and where we could have been more specific about what we wanted versus, we use the phrase "town standard" quite a bit in our contract with them, you know, to the town standard, to the town standard. But if there's nothing documented what the town standard is, then the person who's bidding is bidding with what their standard is, which is, you know, four-inch pipe. So, so definitely, there have been some lessons learned if in the event that we are going to add more at some time, we certainly would probably have a more thoughtful development of the RFP.
I think the addition of Joe Huggins to the role of, what's the name of his job now?
Director of Facilities.
Director of Facilities, I think would enhance that likelihood too. So I think that was a good move in terms of being able to establish that facilities with someone with that type of knowledge.
I would, I would agree.
We can go into public input now. You know, whether, is any public input possible? And reports. Alex, do you have a report?
Yeah, so the, we're back in school and the fall sports are basically into their seasons now. Today was actually the first R MHS singer's rehearsal. I was at six today. The drama club is putting on Mary Collins and they have begun rehearsing and many clubs are starting to speak.
Thank you. Any reports?
Just to stop nearly the committee, but there is an event on October 17th to honor Sally Musica, who was a former first grade teacher at Wood End School in Birchmau. Todd, he's been a long time and unfortunately passed away this summer from, very quickly from pancreatic cancer. It's a 5K walkathon, it's a very family-friendly event. I'll be working on, in terms of sending help, helping out in whatever way I can and as, as many Wood End staff and former Birchmau staff are working on it too. So if you would like to register for it, there is a website. It's smilesforSally.org and you can get all that information there.
Thank you.
The Human Relations Advisory Committee was at the street fair and was, is very grateful to all the people that stopped by. There were great conversations and a lot of interest in joining the committee. So we're hoping to see all those interested on October 1st, that's a Thursday at 7:00 at the police station for our next meeting.
One thing I could perhaps mention, sorry. The, the point of the walk is to raise funds for a scholarship through the Renner Scholarship Foundation that we, I think potentially right now they're talking about, you know, for graduating Rem High School senior who's going to go into the field of education of ours.
Okay. Dr. Doherty?
I only had one thing to record out. It was just that the town accountant was able to close fiscal 15 on Friday the 18th and, which didn't leave me enough time to get a final FY15 presentation for you all. So for your next meeting, I will have the final FY15 financial update, if you will.
Is that a certified free cash number?
Just our budget.
No, no. I make no promises about free cash.
That's in October.
Yeah. So that was, that was the only thing I had.
I have several items. So first, I'm going to just pass this out. This is in a similar format in the packet. I did mention to you, I believe it was the last meeting, that the, we're, we're hoping this year that we're, instead of having school-based presentations, we're going to do more topic-based presentations that our schools will be involved with. So this is a draft and as always, this is going to be subject to timing of different presenters and events. But this is right now what we have planned for major topics during the year. Now certainly, other things will be added as we go throughout the year. We try to, as much as possible, have one major topic because we always know there's other areas that are going to be on an agenda that will be discussed as well. But you could see that we're trying to hit all of the key areas that are aligned with our goals and our action plans so that we can report out to you periodically and in a timely manner throughout, throughout the year, updates so that you have that, that information. So for example, this Saturday, which I know probably Jean will want to talk about later, is the, is the retreat where we're going to have Dorothy Presser come and do a workshop through the District Governance Project. Next, which I guess is now going to be Tuesday's school committee meeting, will be the report. I'm going to present to you the, the results of the focus groups from last year as well as some other data. And then the evaluation will be also next, next week. But you could see, and then a treat on October 5th is we're going to go and visit a modular classroom and there'll be Killam teachers and students there, I believe. Giles and company will be doing a short presentation there. We're also going to have that evening, the communication audit will be, the person from National School Public Relations Association is going to come and ask focus group questions to the school committee as part of that. And then Leonard Williams is going to be giving you a guidance report. So those are the next upcoming meetings. But you can see that there are, throughout the year, there are, there are several topics of interest that we'll be reporting to you on. Anyone have any questions on that?
John, is this list, like posted in for the public?
It's in, it's in the packet. It's in the packet and I am going to put it in my blog.
Yeah.
So, yes, it will be. So there are several other items that I want to share with you this evening. So the first one is, I know we wanted to talk a little bit about the, the two days of school that we had, that normally we have not had the last several years because of the Jewish holidays. So this is a breakdown of the teacher absences and the student absences for September 14th and 15th. And I, we, we've only been in school for a few weeks, so the average daily absence is obviously a very small amount that we're, that we're, a sample size that we're looking at. But you could see that we've been averaging approximately two teachers a day at each of our schools for absences for a variety of reasons. And students, you could see at the high school, we've been averaging 39 students, 16 at the middle school. And that's combined for the middle schools and 24 at the elementary and that's also combined. So you could see on the, the holidays, what you see is the, the first number is the numbers of teachers that were out on September 14th at the high school for, for the religious holiday and then the total number of teachers that were out for that day. And then you could see, which is, so no teachers were out for religious observance and one teacher was out at the high school on the 14th. At the middle school, five teachers were out for religious observance and seven total teachers were out. And then at the elementary school, two and 11. And then on, for students, same, you can see, at the high school, 14 students were out for religious observance, 53 total, seven and 25 at the middle school and 12 and 52 at the elementary. It did decrease on the second day of Rosh Hashanah. So that, that's the data of, certainly, we will take additional data for Yom Kippur, which begins tomorrow night and then continues on Wednesday.
Have you gotten any feedback from teachers or from students or from families about the accommodation policy and the implications?
I have none.
That's a good thing, right? We haven't had any feedback on it, I think? No?
I've not heard anything either way.
Right, okay.
I, tomorrow, we're meeting with principals, so I will ask them if they've heard anything, but I've not heard anything.
Because I know in the past, way back, had with you.
Yes.
If there were problems.
I mean, we have, we've made a point of emphasizing the, the accommodation policy over the last few weeks.
Right.
This is something, and I will, I will send you the preliminary, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, it's all right. It was a little, look, I just had a question. If people did have feedback or questions on how the accommodation policy has been implemented, I know everything is a process and everyone's learning and they're, what I'm wondering is if people have questions, who should they direct their questions to? Obviously, they should talk to their teachers first, but in terms of feedback for us to consider when we are voting again on our calendar, where should people send their feedback about how? about how?
I would, they could send it to me.
Okay, thank you.
This is the first part of the Chapter 70 Commission's preliminary report. I will send you the Part 1 report electronically. It was released on June 30th, and I apologize that I haven't gotten this information to you earlier, it's just, we've had so many other things going on between modular classrooms and the start of school that I wanted to share this information. It, it is very interesting information. So at this point, the Commission has had several hearings, all last spring, and really looked at a variety of, of issues regarding the current Chapter 70 formula and what should be changed. For the most part, the formula hasn't changed much since 1993, and there were a lot of things in 1993 in education that are, were different than they are now. The first part of the report took a look at just two areas, special education and healthcare costs. And what they, what they did, the DESI did, is based on the findings of Part 1 of the Commission, they did a simulation of how much each community would get in additional funding. This is a one-year snapshot now that we would get additional Chapter 70 funding if it was fully funded in the formula for just special education and health insurance costs. So you could see that number way over to the right, the arrow, I don't know if you can see it, 3,000,028,641 is what the town of Reading would receive in additional Chapter 70 funding money if we were fully funded for the changes that have occurred and the increases that have incurred in special education and health insurance since 1993. Now, realistically, the state is not going to be able to fund that all in one year. So if this is ever to come to fruition, it would be done over a several-year span. The last time there was this inequity in school-based funding in the Chap, in Chapter 70, it took seven years to get everyone up to the level that they were supposed to be at. So this is Part 1 of the report. The second part of the report is due on, to the Legislature on November 1st, and it's going to examine the following costs and its impact, which include all of these areas, in district special education rate. The other, Part 1 just looked at out-of-district special education costs. Low income, so that is the, the poverty index of a community, ELL, mental health and wraparound services, professional development, common planning time and instructional coach expenses, extended learning time, technology, full-day preschool, pupil teacher ratios in K to 3, operations and maintenance, and inflation adjustment. So all of these things are going to be looked at in the second part of the report, which is due on November 1st to the Legislature. So what will happen is the Legislature will take all of this information and then most likely will start developing a formula that will be subject to appropriation, but you know, you can see that, that there has been this inequity in the Chapter 70 funding formula for many years. And some communities like Reading, it's been a huge inequity. So I wanted to share that, that piece of data, yes.
There's nothing regarding full-day kindergarten, it's just full-day preschool?
Yes, right now, yes. Okay, to our next topic, MCAS and PARC. So today, the Board of Education met, and actually, I'll, I'll pass this out to you in a second. There's this press release that was embargoed until 5:00, but now we can, we can pass it out. So today, the Board of Education met and they gave, and, and what's going to happen now is it's going to be a series of Board of Education meetings throughout the fall that are going to educate the Board and the community about the PARC and the MCAS and also releasing some results along the way. So today, took more of a global view of the PARC and the MCAS, how we got to this point, what each test is, the strengths of each test. And they also released the preliminary state results for both PARC and for MCAS. Well, they released the preliminary results for PARC and the statewide results for, for MCAS. So I'll, I'll share you with those in a second. On either September 24th or 25th, which is this coming Thursday or Friday, the MCAS results will, will be released. So what does that mean for Reading? That means 5, 8, and 9 science, and at the high school, grade 10 mathematics and ELA. So we do, we are sending, we are preparing a release, and we will be sending out the school and the district information once the embargo is lifted. There is an embargo right now on all of the data. So once that's lifted either Thursday or Friday, we will be sending something out to the, to the community. The high school, since it will have complete MCAS results, and they did not take part, will be doing a presentation in the upcoming week, most likely at one of their PTO meetings. K to 8 and the district will have a full presentation once PARC results are released, because all we have right now are the science results. It is estimated right now that's going to be in November. And then individual student reports are going to be shipped to the school, to our, to, to the district, the 24th or the 25th. They come here, we get them into envelopes, it usually takes a week to, to get those sent out to the schools. Although actually, it may take less because we don't have as many reports this time. On October 19th and 20th, the Board of Education will have two meetings, and they'll be getting at that time more PARC and MCAS results, and there will be a continued discussion at that board meeting. Late October or early November, we are going to see final PARC statewide results. Right now, you're only going to see the preliminary, and we will start getting the PARC district and school results. And then the accountability results for all districts and schools will be released at that time as well. Remember, we can't, the state cannot give us our accountability results until both the PARC and MCAS results are completed.
Is that embargoed something that we have to do?
No.
If you don't, if you go out before the embargo?
I don't know what they would do to us, but.
I think they've always used that.
They've always used that term. Early November, the Commissioner is going to give a recommendation on the state assessment, which state assessment, to the Board of Education. November 16th, there's going to be a final public hearing, I believe it's going to be at the DESI in Walden, on the state assessment. It will give the, the public one last opportunity to give their point of view. There have been, by the way, several hearings already on, again, in the spring on, on the PARC and MCAS. On November 17th, the Board is going to vote on the Commissioner's recommendation. And then in December, individual student reports will be shipped in December. So we will have school and district results before December, but families will not receive individual student reports until December. And then December 14th and 15th, if the Board of Education adopts PARC, there'll be a discussion on the next piece, which will not occur for a few years, but need to figure out about when the high school test will begin and the competency determination for the graduation requirements. If PARC is not adopted, then there's going to be a discussion of possible changes to the current MCAS and upgrades to it. So that's really where we're at with the timeline. I'm going to pass out to you the embargoed press release, which has now been released. I'd start in the Globe Online this evening, so I'll just share with you some statewide MCAS results. I don't think you can see those, but you're going to get, you're going to get it in that press release as well. So the statewide MCAS results are listed there. The, the, the one thing to remember is that for grades 3 through 8, this is not the entire state anymore. This is, I believe 46% of the school districts took MCAS this year. So the results now are not the entire state. And for the high school, it is the entire state. And then here are the preliminary PARC results for the computer-based tests only, not the paper, because there were some districts that did the paper-based test for grades 3 through 8. And not surprising, the, the PARC results are lower than the MCAS results, and that was expected because it is a more rigorous assessment.
Dr. Doherty, pardon me if you've already explained this, or if I'm not seeing it, because I'm just looking at it, but how do we compare, so there's four MCAS categories and five PARC categories. How can you sort of see, well, what's a one on PARC versus one failing on MCAS? If they, is the DESI going to provide us anything to help us bridge this and connect the two results?
Eventually, yeah, yeah.
Eventually, okay. Because that would be very helpful, it's a little bit hard to, to compare these. Thanks.
Well, it's not, yeah, it's two different tests, so it's not, it's, it's, you're done up a rating.
Right, yeah.
Because it, it really is two different tests. It's like compares apples and oranges.
Okay. So we wouldn't really get, you know, of course, with the concern about Joshua being a level 3 in the level 3 district, but what, can you remind us how that's going to be impacted, that would be about the PARC?
So because we went to PARC, we're, we're held harmless this year in the accountability rating, we can only go up.
Will we, will we get a rating, actually?
Oh, yeah, no, we'll get a rating.
Based on?
We'll get a rating on, based on both the MCAS and the PARC scores. There's a formula to determine the accountability rating, so the science MCAS scores are part of that formula. And so once the PARC scores come in, they'll be able to determine the accountability rating.
Would we know if we had, so we would know if we improved, but we wouldn't necessarily know if we, if, you know, unfortunately, another school became a level 3. Would we know that, or no?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I think we would. We would if, I think we would, but we're, either way, we would be held harmless.
Regardless of whether or not they adopt PARC next, this year's fifth A, science, they're still MCAS and the high school is still?
You mean last year? You mean, oh, this upcoming year? Science will always be MCAS until further notice. And the high school, until the graduate class of 2019, will be MCAS. Okay. Okay, that's, that's it.
Carl, you have a report.
Yeah. All right, so definitely, this year, of all my years at the high school, from junior to senior, I've seen the most changes implemented at the high school. I think that's definitely a testament to our Mr. Barker. But we have senior privileges now, so if you're a senior, you have a study A block and G block, you can either come in late or leave early, which I think is great, makes sense. Like the detentions, like, they're now like an hour and 30 minutes late. You don't see as many kids staggering in late. I know I don't, you know, I don't gamble anymore. So I, it's good, and, I mean, even like Lisa's pizza is now served in the cafeteria, which is really good. Over the summer, Mr. Z, I met with all the leaders at the high school set includes captains of the sports teams, student council, class officers, like all the, yeah, it was all grades. And he was just explaining how to conduct yourself at the high school, some team-building activities, so that stuff was helpful. And, I mean, Mr. Barker, again, I, he's, I see him in the halls all the time, like, he's really friendly with the kids, so I just think he's doing a good job.
You know, can you elaborate on the senior privileges? So everybody, all seniors have those privileges, or do you have to have a certain grade point of attitude?
Yeah, so you have to maintain above a 2.0 GPA. You can't have any, like, disciplinary issues, so like a suspension would get him revoked. And you can't, you can't be late, like, I think it's like two or three times, or else they'll take him away.
And, and you think, we're, we're monitoring that anyways, Todd, yes, anyways, we're trusting the, the impact that this can have on it, so some really good ideas. And other students feel similar to the way you feel, Carl?
Oh, yeah, they, they love it.
I can see why. But there's some accountability to it, so.
Oh, yeah.
Good stuff.
Thanks, Matt.
No, I'm, no.
Here we have some donations.
Mr. Chair, move to accept a donation in the amount of $1,500 from the Friends of Reading Fair Coffee to be used to support the coaching assistance for the 2015 season.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Five zero.
Mr. Chair, move to accept a donation in the amount of $1,250 from the Reading Volleyball Parents Organization to be used to support the coaching assistance for the 2015 season.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Five zero.
Mr. Chair, move to accept a donation in the amount of $2,400 from the Friends of our MHS cheering to be used to purchase choreographer services and the corresponding music for the 2015 competition season.
Is there a second? Yes.
Thank you. So the description is that this piece for choreography and music, but the details of the $2,400 list choreography service and an individual's name. And I was just wondering what, how that breaks into the choreography and music?
Sure, the choreography, the actual dance routines being designed by extreme choreography, the actual music was sent and compiled by Nicole, by the other person.
So that's the music component?
The music component, yeah. Think of it as audio and dance, so the audio component was, was compiled by Nicole.
Thanks, I'll thank you, Mr. Chair.
All those in favor? Five zero.
Mr. Chair, move to accept a donation from the Catalotta family in the amount of $500 to Coolidge Middle School to be used to support the band and choir expenses and the art department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Yes.
Mr. Chair, if you would indulge me, the, the donors wrote a letter, and if I could just read one tiny part of it?
Sure.
Would that be okay? The, the donors wrote a really beautiful letter, but they specifically wanted to acknowledge some staff, and it seems appropriate to just read that. This donation is made to honor all the wonderful staff you've encountered through the years for excellence in teaching while nurturing and inspiring students. Some people make a lasting impression, either through the knowledge and wisdom they helped impart, or through the caring and kindness shown. Our deepest appreciation goes to Ms. Weber, Mr. Mulligan, Mr. Bernard, Mr. Hennerberry, Ms. Anderson, Ms., Mr. Medei, Ms. LeBeau, Ms. Duane, Ms. Ventura, Ms. Zani, Ms. Munghasat. Thank you very much, my kids don't go to college. And Mr. Mercardo. And they very specifically say to all the staff, but they did acknowledge that, so I wanted to acknowledge that.
And well, Sarah, Mrs. Mashant and Mrs. Payne, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Knight.
All those in favor? Five zero.
Mr. Chair, move to accept another generous donation in the amount of $800 from the Young Women's League to be used to supplement educational enrichment at the Coolidge Middle School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Five zero.
Mr. Chair, move to accept an anonymous donation in the amount of $10,000 from the, oh, did I skip? Oh, I apologize, thank you. Move to accept a donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Young Women's League to be used to upgrade the audiovisual equipment at the Parker Middle School auditorium.
Is there a second? Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Five zero.
I apologize for that. Move to accept an anonymous donation in the amount of ten thousand dollars to be used to support the district's behavioral health efforts with students to be used at any time at the discretion of the superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wow.
Yeah, I just, so that your, both schools, at the middle school level, eighth grade, will be doing the Challenge Day this year. So we've been writing grants to help fund that, and certainly, this donation is going to go a long way to help support that as well.
So Parker didn't do the Challenge Day last year?
Last year, they did not. The high school, grade ten did. This year, both middle schools and the eighth grade will be doing it.
Can you tell me what Challenge Day is? I should know this, but I don't.
No, it's brandy to that.
Four of us, right, involved in Challenge Day? So Challenge Day is a day where there is a lot of team-building and reflection among eighth-grade students. And really, it is understanding and respecting people's differences and sharing that out with each other. It's a very emotional day with students and staff. There's also several staff involved as well, staff and adults. Four of us were involved in some of the Challenge Day events last year. It's a pretty emotional day, but we got very positive results from it, from both staff and students, something. And there are follow-up activities that go along with it after the, after the effect.
It's just sort of based on the premise as well that, you know, in terms of trying to reduce bullying or that sort of behavior, it's very difficult to bully somebody if you really know them beyond the labels or beyond the perception. So it builds those bridges among all students. It's been a very successful program. Other surrounding districts have used it for years. So both middle schools and the high school administration were meeting at the end of last year to talk about where's the best place to do this. And so they agreed that, well, it will be done during the eighth-grade year for students. The high school will also connect and probably include some staff. And they're looking at ways to make, to use it as a transition time to bring both middle schools at a time when they're going into the high school.
We haven't had a meeting, so I'm very excited about it. What, what time do you?
It's December. Yeah, I had to think for a second.
Thank you very much.
I got to participate in Challenge Day last year, and I would, I guess I would challenge the administration in the spirit of challenging to look at if this is a direction we want to move at going forward, how do we measure school climate? How do we measure that this is a successful program? It's a very expensive program. This donation is unbelievably generous, and it's for such an important cause, which is behavioral health of our students. But I do think we have an obligation to make sure that we're using it in a way that we can measurably say is reducing bullying, is creating a safer and more supportive school environment. So that's sort of a challenge I'll put out there. Next year, if we intend to move forward with this program as a district, I'm going to be asking, well, how do you know it worked? What data are you collecting? So I'll be interested to hear more about the impact next year.
I would like to echo that, and I've heard great things about it, not by any means questioning the validity, you know, the success of it or its usefulness, but I do think it's important to come back with data. We all hear about data, right? And student impact down the road, not necessarily, programs like this, from my experience, and not just my, you know, personal experience, but my professional experience, do have an impact, but it's also considered sometimes short-term. And having been involved in conducting many of these types of programs, been involved with Rachel's Challenge, which is a similar type of program. In high school, did it in musical, did it in DeAndres. Other programs, including the SAD.
The stage car crash.
Right, Mark Cock crash. You know, I've seen them, a lot of effort and time and money spent on it and efforts and resources. Sometimes I'm not so sure that had long-lasting impact in changing behavior and culture.
Well, we can just vote on accepting the donation right now.
Right, no question, sorry.
Yes.
I was just going to say that I would also caution not to go just solely in terms of numbers or data, that there are anecdotal things, there are, there's, there can be lots of evidence to document the effectiveness of a program like this, although it can be difficult. Over time, the idea that this will be something that happens every year and will potentially in goal trickle down and trickle up when the students go to the high school. So hopefully, there'll be ways to see changes in our culture. And I mean, we had evidence of connections, increased empathy and compassion that happened after this pilot study, so hopefully, we will be able to document that.
I should add not to refute it, because I agree with the point you make, but just one thing that makes it a little bit different than some of the other programs, which I agree, the participants aren't passive and not doing minutes a day of facilitation. So people all day long are interacting in various types of activities, which I think is a very different situation than watching a, watching a program.
I can, I actually just want to say, Chair, that I met people at the event that I will never see the same way again, and that's something that impacts me. I can speak for me on a frequent basis, that the connections I made and the way I look at people changed after participating in that program. Thank you.
All those in favor of accepting the ten thousand dollar donation?
I did. Pretty much voted to accept them.
I should say this at every meeting, but obviously, the generosity of the Young Women's League, this wonderful family, all of these organizations, and this incredibly generous anonymous donation is really quite amazing how supported our schools are. Oh, minutes?
Yes.
I move to approve the open session minutes dated August thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. Second.
Is there a second? Yes. Do we have a discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Six zero. We will, we will now move into executive session to protect the litigation positions of the committee.
Mr. Chair, move to enter to the executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and the approval of minutes and to not return to open session this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Denying?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.